I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the regular scheduled meeting for March 27th in the City of Barstown. We're going to announce that the head of the meeting will be going into executive session pursuant to KRI 61.8101B for deliberations on the future acquisition or sale of real property by a public agency when publicly it likely to affect the value of the property. We'll be doing that at the end of this meeting. The first order of the agenda, I'd like to ask Chief Madely if you would introduce, we have some new firefighters that are going to swear in tonight, so Chief, if you'd go me out ahead.
As you all are aware, we lost three firefighters. Two moved on shortly after I came in office. So we took applications, did a search. I think we came up with three very good candidates. I guess I can face this way, so I can call them up here tonight. As I can call you up, if you would come on forward. Our first new firefighter is Joe Strom. Joe comes to us as a volunteer from the Barstown Fire Department. He also volunteers in letting in Marion County Fire, Bracfordville Fire, Crabbleswitch Fire, works part-time for Marion County EMS. He's a National and State Certified EMT. He was awarded the Outstanding First Responder of the Year by Marion County Chamber of Commerce 2016. Did I say that was right? Joe works great with families of victims and so forth after losing a son of his own in a tragic situation. Joe's a veteran of the United States Army, excuse me, Army, and he is supported tonight by his wife and kids who are here. Joe Strom. Our next new firefighter is Connor Noonan. Connor is one of our young guys. He comes to us as a volunteer from Zelton Fire Department in Bulleye County. He's a part-time firefighter with Shepherdsville Fire Department. Connor is a 400 hours certified firefighter, an EMT, has mat tech, and Connor is supported tonight here by his crew. He's working with the ICS. Connor Noonan. And our next one is Justin Rayland. Justin comes to us from the Springfield-Worthing County Fire Department, Mercer County Fire. Justin is attending EMT training in Lexington. Justin is NIM certified, CPR certified, First A certified. He's also attended the Nashville Auto Diesel College. Justin is supported tonight by his fiancee, kids, and his parents.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Justin, Connor, and Justin, we're going to welcome you all to the firefighters, to the City of Barstown Fire Department. So I'm going to swear you all in this evening, and we'll present you with your badges. So each of you would raise your right hand. And I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and that be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as I continue as citizen thereof, and I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability the position of firefighter according to law. And I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present Constitution, I being a citizen of this state, have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state nor out of it, nor have I sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons, nor have I acted as a second in carrying the challenge, nor aided or assisted any person thus offending, so help me God. Congratulations, and Chief, congratulations. Connor, congratulations. Justin, congratulations. Glad to have you all join us. Any of you all like to say anything to the group tonight or to your families?
I'd like to say yes.
Welcome. Appreciate you all's service. All right, the next item on our agenda is to receive input from the public, and Mr. Nick Kipper is here representing the backyard home steppers. It's the second time they've requested to be in front of the council, so I'm going to make me be happy to let him speak and open the floor to Nick first.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Basically, it looks like here tonight you can kind of see what's going on with the ordinance, draft ordinance that we have been circulating trying to get passed. It's, this is, backyard chickens are a very popular nationwide trend. The ordinance banning chickens in Barstown was adopted somewhere back in the 50s, I guess. And at that time, the trend was away from throwing your food at home, going to supermarkets. And in the time since, we've kind of drifted back the other way. The pendulum has swung the other way where people are wanting to get a little more connected with their food source, eat locally, be a little more environmentally conscious. This is something that a few of us in the community are very interested in, and we just want to grow our own food on our own property. And I don't, we would like to see the council take up the issue and discuss it and give us an answer one way or the other, just so we'll know. It's, if you need evidence of the trend, you all have probably, maybe you've heard from a few people, I don't know, but it's something that people are interested in. It's something that, we have three stores in town that are marketing products for backyard chickens. You know, the little space saver coops that they have now at TSC, those are not going out in the county. Those are for in-town use. So this is something that people are buying, and it's something that people want. Other communities do it. Louisville, you have chickens in Louisville, you can have chickens in Lexington, you can have chickens in Bowling Green, you can have chickens basically in any large city. It's the smaller towns like Barstown that are more resistant to that trend, for whatever reason, I don't understand. But it is something that there is a pent-up demand for. People are doing it anyway. And by taking up the ordinance, the city council has the opportunity to take control of the situation, to provide some input, to put some guidelines on it. We have worked on a draft ordinance. We got input from planning and zoning. We got input from some of you all on the council. We've gotten input from our old members that it meets our needs. It also takes into account the needs of the larger community and the fears of the larger community. And basically, it's limited. You all are the council. If you try it and it don't work, you can always revoke it. I mean, it's not, you know, it's not something that once it's chiseled in stone, can't be undone. But I don't understand the opposition to it, and a lot of the fears are basically just fears of the unknown. It's like, you know, well, we allow chickens in Barstown, all of a sudden the Beverly Hillbillies are moving in next door. That's not the case. And there wouldn't be anything wrong with having Beverly Hillbillies as neighbors. But it, basically, a property that is well-kept is not going to be any less well-kept because you have chickens on it. A property that is not well-kept is not going to be any more well-kept or any worse because it has chickens on it. Our ordinance that we drafted takes care of the barking chickens, the roosters. We don't have any roosters. We have a limited number of hands. We have a limit on the size of the coop. There's a lot of limits on it. It's a lot more restrictive than the ordinance they have in Louisville and way more restrictive than the ordinance they have in Bowling Green. Basically, in Bowling Green, you can have anything, and we're not doing that. The city already has an enforcement mechanism in place. You have a chicken ordinance. It says no chickens. But if somebody has chickens, and lots of people do, and I had them for years, Daniel had them, Eddie had them, it's, you know, and we all get a letter. I mean, there was an enforcement, enforcing the ordinance. If somebody doesn't meet the standards of the ordinance, the same mechanism applies. In addition to that, you all get to shape the issue because you have a, the extension office, agricultural extension office is going to help out. They're going to verify the applications for permits, which we will pay for, and they're not going to charge you for that. But basically, people that are keeping chickens are going to be told how to do it, and they're going to inspect the property to make sure that all of the requirements of the ordinance are met. They're also going to require, there's going to be some type of educational component to that. So if you're keeping chickens, you need to know about this, this, and this. And, you know, back to the fear of the unknown, I had chickens for three years, and I don't think there was an outbreak of histoplasmosis in Barstown during that time. Daniel had chickens. I don't think, Daniel, did any of your kids have salmonella during the time you had chickens? You know, a lot of this stuff is just, yeah, it's true, but it's not an issue. It's no worse than bats in your attic. It's no worse than a flock of starlings flying over. I mean, it's just the world we live in, you know, I just don't get some of the resistance. And all we are asking to do, we have a well-considered, well-reasoned, well-thought-out, planned ordinance that puts strict limits on things, and there is no reason to stop people from being able to produce their own food on their own property if we're not affecting anybody's property values or quality of life. It's about our quality of life. I want my kid to know where food comes from. I hate throwing food in the garbage and sending it out to the landfill. I want to be able to do something with that. That is all I have.
Do any of the council have questions?
I had one question. When you all were here the last time, I prepared this in a draft ordinance form. I just didn't hear anybody on the council that wanted to bring it forward. But in your draft, it says chicken coops and enclosures shall be large enough to provide at least 16, and it says feet per chicken.
Should be square feet.
Okay, and then it says coop cannot exceed 50 square feet.
Right.
But you can have up to 12. So 12 times 16 is 192.
Right.
But there's also pins. You can have a pin that's not part of the coop that is used for the square feet, I think the way it reads in there.
Yeah, and probably we need to put a definition section in that. The building, the coop is the chicken house or the root structure where they live. The run is their fenced-in area outside of that, and the enclosure is the combination of a coop and the run. So your enclosure, you would have to have a total of 16 feet. And the reason, the reason that we do that, some of the other ordinances require less space. And having kept chickens all my life and not getting a histoplasmosis yet, the, the more space they have, the cleaner they are, the quieter they are, the less problem you have with droppings and feathers and noise. And that is just a kind of a provision. You're going to have to have this many, this much space if you want, if you want to have 12 chickens, you've got to have enough room to accommodate them.
So that 190, I was going to say 192 square feet would be coops and enclosures?
Yes, a total. And basically, on a coop, we didn't put a minimum size for a coop in there, but basically on a coop, for roofing purposes, you need about four square feet for a bird. But, you know, you could, we kind of left it up to individuals, to whatever combination they wanted to do there. And also, parts of that ordinance are lifted from the county ordinance. Part of it came from Janet Crowe at, at planning and zoning. She had a workshop for you all way back when, when we tried to kick all this off, talking about it.
Nick, there's a reference here about the county agriculture extension agent.
Yes.
Works S and D, verify the application, make sure it's accurate, it complies with the ordinance, and do inspection, but I have not heard anything officially from the county extension department as to their willingness to provide personnel for this purpose.
Well, I would urge all of you to check with him to verify that, but that's, this is kind of what they do. They're here to support the Indian agriculture. Of course, he's not going to come and talk to you all and advocate. They're not an advocacy group. They are, they're here to support. And, you know, of course, we understand, this is not being muddled on tonight. This is kicking off the process, and you all have plenty of time to verify that. I don't know, have any of you all talked to Robbie? What did he say?
He was willing to do the inspection, but he's not going to police it.
Right.
And he was hoping that there would be education, but there's nothing that says you have to have that. But that's what, he would like to do that upfront and maybe continue, but that as far as his dealings are going to be.
Right. My understanding on the, on my conversation with Robbie, that he was going to, part of verifying that people were ready to do this was going to be the educational.
Yes, he did say that.
Yeah, so, but yeah, it's, they're going to verify that the, they're going to go out and verify that, yes, all these things are in place. Now, if somebody doesn't adhere to that after the original inspection, then you go into your normal enforcement phase, which is exactly what you do now.
I have one more question, too. Did you mean for it to say up here vacant property? Because it says here, and the first, it gives a number of activities and all that, and then it says at the end of number two, no mobile homes, I mean, single-family town homes, mobile home parks, or vacant property. What does that mean? What is a vacant property?
Well, I don't know what, I mean, that's kind of, I guess that needs to be tightened up. I put that in because I knew that that was an issue with some of the council members. And so I just, I put that in there to try to get the ordinance moving. But basically, a vacant property would be an empty lot with nothing else on it but a chicken coop and chickens. I don't, I mean, our development has to be a residential area, that, you know, it's not commercial space and all that. So, I mean, I just put that in there. A lot of this stuff, I am just, I have a master's degree in horticulture. I'm not, and, you know, I don't know how to write ordinances, and thank you to some of you all that helped me with this. But that probably needs to be tightened up. But frankly, I think, I can't imagine that anybody is going to pay 20, 30, more thousand dollars for a city lot just to raise chickens on it. I mean, yeah, my chickens, when I had them, were not at my house, but they were at, I have a storage building. It's, you know, they were there with my vegetable garden, with my landscape tools and tillers and all that stuff. So I don't know, would you consider that a vacant lot?
Yes.
In my neighborhood, a vacant lot would be probably something that whole lot. Yes, I would, in my opinion, yes.
Well, that's fine. I'm not the, I'm not the only person pursuing this. You know, at this point, there's a lot of other people involved. We have, you know, we have a lot of people following the group on Facebook, so it's really not about me at this point. Yes, sir.
What do you, what would you think would be a fair amount for a permit?
I don't know. Now, that's something I really don't know. I don't know what it costs the city to issue a permit. I know that your verification process is free. You're not having to send an employee out there to, to look at it. You wouldn't want it to be, you know, you wouldn't want to set the permit so high that people can't afford it. I mean, this, you know, this does cut across all cross-sections. We have, we have some people that are interested in raising chickens that are pretty well off, and we have other people that are just average folks like me, and we want to, we're willing to pay a fee just to, just to assure compliance. But I don't know, what does it cost the city? I mean, this is some, there's a couple of blanks, and I sent Ms. Copeland an email with a couple of blanks to fill in.
Would you have did your research in Louisville, Lexington, Bowling Green, and other different places there? What were their fees?
I don't know what the fees are. I know Bowling Green, there is no permit required. I don't know. I can, I will be happy to find that out for you and let you know. Louisville, Louisville has like a two-layer thing. You can only have six if you have under a half an acre. If you have over a half an acre, then you can have all you want. Basically, in Bowling Green, if you're, if you're not bothering your neighbors, they don't care what you do. Lexington is six hands. No roosters. You can have roosters in Louisville, you can have roosters in Bowling Green. I mean, I'm more familiar with those aspects of the ordinances than I am what they do charge for fees.
Do you have any questions, Nick?
I'm the pastor. I don't think we need chickens in Barstown. And I do agree with Joe Buckman. I think a lot of education needs to be learned before this is pursued. There is a lot of things about raising chickens that I've learned just in the last week from Googling. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of, it's a lot of things to consider. It's not cheap to do if you do it right. And I think education needs to be pursued before any of this takes place. Because I think if people really knew what went into it, they would reconsider. I went into studying it with an open mind, and I think there's no way, obviously, my fresh eggs from farmer's market, thank you, really. And there's several people that sell them there, and they're great. The yards in Barstown are generally pretty small. I don't know how many, they only have that much room to raise chickens without them being right up next to your neighbors. And I really don't want chickens up next to my yard. I don't have a fence. It's all open, and I don't want chickens up to my fence. Chickens do get loose, they do, and you're going to have chickens flying around Barstown. I'm just not for it. You know, I just don't have any.
What about the historical district? We've already got so many guidelines. Are we talking, and our lots are so small, so many of them are so small, what happens if somebody has a small lot and wants? I mean, I heard last time when I was here, something about you've got to be 15 feet. Is that what you're talking about? Like, you're talking about in the center of your yard?
Yeah, I would have to have.
You're in your backyard at your house?
I have a stamp at my house that I could have my chickens on. I mean, it's a very small area.
But that's my concern about, we can't even put a closed line up in the historical district. We can't paint our door without approval, you all approving us. The chickens, and I'm like, Kurt, we've got farmer's market that offers a whole lot to everyone for it if you want fresh eggs. I'm very opposed to it, and that's fine and dandy for somebody like you, Nick, that takes care of what you have. But I've dealt with a lot of people that don't take care of what they have, and it's a whim to them, and the next thing you know, it's my problem. I don't want any more problems. There's enough rules I'm following in the historical district already. And like I say, we're not even supposed to have a closed line if I can't put a fence up unless it's a certain color and all that, and now we're going to have chickens? I'm very opposed to it, and I've worked on a farm and I've cleaned out chicken pens. They're not clean. And I might be going from the old farm girl saying it, but chickens were not clean when I was, and you've got to clean that out every week. You've got to clean it out.
It's a commitment, from what I've read. It's a commitment. They've got to be cleaned in the morning, they've got to be cleaned at night. And they've got to be water, fresh water. The food's not cheap. You just don't throw your table scraps out. You've got to have, you've got to have regular protein, regular.
And they all know that.
It's all expensive, though. And I think a lot of people, though, what I'm afraid of, they're going to get into it, and then they're going to realize.
That it's too much.
It's too much, and what are you going to do with all these chickens? And are these chickens considered pets? Are they going to be considered farm animals? Because that's another thing, I don't know if these people that are thinking of y'all getting into it are aware of. Okay, if they're going to be pets, you might get them as little cute chickens. Okay, it's going to be six months before they start laying the eggs. Six months. And in the meantime.
Are they having bands on their legs, too? Like, when we had chickens, we had to have bands on their legs, and I'm going back in the olden days.
Well, now, this is a free forum discussion here. You all can direct your comments.
But I'm just asking, there's a lot of things, we've not seen the ordinance that you all are, that Keisha's proposing, but I, you know, there, there used to be rules about having a band on a chicken, and who enforces that and who does that?
Not even at that stage, at this point.
But, yeah, well, I just.
I'm here to discuss something.
Okay. Well, there's just, of doing it, but we'd like to see a, before you all do it, can you all run an ordinance, buy us in the, is that what you'll do in the paper, the local ordinance, if you all do propose this? I'm just asking, once it's done, it's too late, and we know that.
We have an agenda that gets announced. We have any meeting, and those agendas all do contain whatever ordinances we're going to have. You would have access to an ordinance prior to a meeting, for sure.
But it wouldn't be in the paper published and all that?
We don't do that for every ordinance we pass.
Oh, right, right, I know that.
But just to answer your question about where would they be located, a lot of that's spelled out in this draft ordinance, is how far away they could be from a property line and adjoining house, how high, tall they could be, the size of the coops and lot.
I don't have a problem for to email them to you if they propose. I think they circulated at their meeting several months ago. I mean, it wasn't.
All you have to email is anybody.
But I'm just wondering about the historical.
It's a rough draft.
Chances are you're not going to have any chickens in the historical district with these guys.
Okay, I'm one alley away from the historical district, but I live in Barstown.
Can I take one more question?
Yes, my question is, I mean, we moved into this three years ago. We, I sent all of you guys a letter today. My name is Cheryl Marquess. And my question is this, I mean, if I'm, I'm right next door to my neighbor, you know, I can, I can see them in the dining room. Suppose they decide to get chickens. The historic board tells me I can't even put up a fence. I can't take, you know what I'm saying? I mean, what's the recourse for the historical district and preserving the property values and the stuff like that if we're faced with a situation where we're trapped? I mean, we bought into these houses, we tried, we did this because we believe it's a good thing to do. We did it because there are people around us that we like, that do like following the rules, and we knew the rules. And I think that most of the people who bought into the city and the historic district understood the rules completely. And so it seems a little unfair to the people who were there, who were having to invest probably a lot of additional money to follow the guidelines and to maintain some of these bigger homes on these tiny lots, and now all of a sudden, you're telling us we're going to have chickens to deal with? And I just, I, I just, that's not what we signed up, not at all.
HRP guideline would have an effect on this without, they're taking that up.
And what about recent?
Okay, I've got, Ms. Burry, you want more?
Yes, Nick, I've missed this ordinance somewhere, but that chicken run, would that have like a wiring over top so they can't get out?
Well, it wouldn't have to.
So they could get out?
They're required to keep their, I know this is not vague. I mean, it's okay if I go ahead and answer her question. Hey, it does not, it is not a hot one. Some of them do, some of the commercial ones, like they sell. Uh, some of them do, some of the commercial ones, like they sell, the ones, the one that I would have that would fit on my property at 502 North Third would, would have, would have a lid on. Uh, but, but a chicken is not going to fly more than six feet. The modern breeds of chickens that are sold today, you're not gonna get them, they don't fly like, you know, they don't fly like crows or anything like that. They're, they're gonna stay very well contained. My chickens never got out. I had nine chickens for three years.
Okay, these are a number of chickens that are vacant.
Can any of the councilmen decide any more questions?
Yes. Oh, go ahead. Any last thing?
I was just gonna, just coming on that, the ordinance, proposal ordinance requires that the chickens be contained. So whether it's by a tall pen or a top on top, you know, whatever, that, that does require them to contain it. So, you'll, so, I mean, so you'll probably need to look at, and I've heard several people, all for the opposition, that talk about, talk about the historical district, what if we tried an ordinance for a while, you know, and first introduced it and excluded out the historical district? Because I can under, I know, I, I read your, uh, letter or email today that you were talking about the small lots in town, and you're afraid they weren't as conducive to raising chickens. I know that yours is in the historical district, but maybe we can talk about that back in the lot, and if you still have your other lot, you'll.
Right.
There, uh, and, and, you know, just, just to see how, what the problem is. But now, the other thing is, probably most subdivisions in the last thirty, forty years have restrictions against chickens being raised on, in the subdivisions. And this, no matter what ordinance we pass, it will not override subdivision restrictions. So, yeah. Right there.
So you're saying you could write the ordinance and leave the, and, uh, keep the historical where they're protected?
Um, that's always, you know, it's whatever the vote of the majority is. He speaks for the majority, but that, that can be done.
That can be done?
Can be done. It might be a compromise that where we exclude out the historical district, and then look at it in two years and say, okay, how bad is it? Is this something we, you know, we look at what's existing? Is this something we just never wanted in the historical district? Or is this something that the way they're handling it and the way the regulations working, that it might work in the historical district with some other guidelines? But, uh, you know, of course, with the historical district, uh, guidelines, I mean, they're gonna have to go get that approved and go through that process, which is gonna be, I don't know what the filing fees is, are for it. So it's gonna be a permit plus that filing fee plus all the other requirements the historical review board, and it might be difficult to comply with all that anyhow, but you'll, but we, I mean, everything's open right now. We, we just wanna hear everybody and, and get the input. And I appreciate all the emails I've gotten, and I've read all of them, so.
Um, well, uh, thank you all for coming today, and I have truly listened to everyone everywhere I go. I, I do think that, um, it should be put on the agenda. That way, they know where they stand, um, whether it's a yay or a nay. Um, I, I hear what you're saying when it comes to the historical district. I, I hear that. And, um, I think that's a chance to sit down with Rochelle. And, and, you know, go from there on that, because I know that you're close together. I've been to many of your homes. Um, but also hear, um, the, the young adults that have reached out to me in reference to, um, having these chickens. So, I, I think that, um, there is education that must be had in reference to, um, this program. But also, um, to be fair, they, they've been here twice, and so, they, they need a yay or a nay. And, and I think that, that, um, that should happen, that there should be, it should be put on the agenda, and that if, if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass, and if it does, it does. But there should be some guidelines, um, in reference, and some clearance in reference to the language that is in the proposed, um, ordinance. In the proposed ordinance, there was twelve chickens. I, I personally thought that was too many. Um, the, um, the coop, it, it should be enclosed. There, there should be a covering on top of it. Um, um, the vacant lot, I, I wasn't for the vacant lot. So, you know, um, I, I know that there are things that need to be cleared up, and, and that, um, in a roundtable type of way, um, the, the education piece and the verbiage should be cleared up. So, um, I, I would think that the, the proposed agenda needs to be tightened up. Um, and education piece, whatever the ag department want it, must be put into that proposed ordinance that, before it's even brought to the council. So, the ordinance has to be right before it gets to the council. And then, um, we need to put that on the agenda and, and let them know if it's a yay or a nay. I just think that's, that's fair. You know, coming back, he's been twice. Um, how many times can he say the same thing? You know, um, we, we don't ask anyone else to do that. So, I, I think that, you know, it should be put on the agenda and, and proposed, and, and if it's a no, if, if the guidelines aren't met, if the education isn't in there, if a enclosed top on the coop is not there, um, the square footage, what have you. Um, I, I just think that we need to be fair. Um, and that, uh, everyone's voices have been heard. So, the council has, um, a chance to look over that ordinance, um, and decide if they want to, um, pass it or not.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Copeland. Anyone else?
She said, I'm sorry, not to correct you, but I think you said the coop had to be enclosed. It has to be enclosed. You meant the run. I think you meant the run.
Yes, and, and if there is no, um, I, I don't know, I, on the, the coops that I had seen, they, they didn't look like plain coops. I mean, they were, looked like dollhouses or something. But I'm just saying that they, they should have a covering on top of them.
Well, a coop is, a coop is a building.
Okay, alright.
Of some sort. And then the run is generally open air, that's gonna, now, you can put a top on it. Uh, basically, you put some kind of medical.
Okay, let's finish this out. We got some other things to make.
We keep making reference to the historic district, but we have a lot of older neighborhoods in town that are small, they don't have homeowner associations, anybody to help, help them with monitoring this kind of thing. So we have to keep that in mind. And we've got several neighborhoods that fall into that category. And you have a lot of, a lot of tenants, a lot of renters and things like that in those neighborhoods too. So we have to keep all that in mind when thinking about this.
Code enforcement, we only have a part-time code enforcement person. So, any complaints for code enforcement goes to the mayor's office, which I can tell you, you already get quite a few code enforcement complaints anyhow. But I think it does deserve to be put on the agenda in an ordinance form. We'll be happy to share it with you all. And, uh, I think we also need to talk to Robyn Snyder with the extension department to make sure he is committed to the level that we think he is before we play it to, to a vote.
Can I make one more comment? There's a lot of really comment. I know some of you didn't get a chance to talk tonight, so I think on, on the city website, our email addresses are there. I've got a bunch, probably almost a dozen in favor of this and one against it, and plus I've heard four. So, you know, if you didn't feel like you needed to say something, feel free, get on there and email us and let us know how you feel. And be specific, just, I just don't like it or don't want it, you know, doesn't really give me a reason why not to vote for it, or, or, uh, or I want chickens or eggs, and that doesn't tell me anything either. You'll be specific why you think it should or should not be passed.
Okay. We'll move on then to the rest of the agenda. Thank all of you all for taking the time to be here tonight and speak on behalf or against any way. We appreciate your all's input. It's always helpful for us to make a decision here from the community. Thank you. The next one that we have is a, we bring this back, I think Jessica, we had tackled this earlier, uh, this agreement with QK4 for services regarding the multi-use path. I think we had some questions on the language of the contract, and I think that's been cleaned up now, so would you like to address this a little further?
Uh, I really don't have anything else to say. At this point, it was really more legal jargon that was in question. And I guess my question would be, is, if Tim and Councilman Kelly are okay with the changes in the general terms and conditions, then I'm, I'm in favor. So I guess it would be making sure that everybody, everyone's concern was, has been addressed.
They, they have the changes that you requested. You're not opposed to that, yes?
It appeared to me that they had. I just wanted to make sure that you guys had had an opportunity to take a look and make sure everything was addressed. But if there's not any other questions about the agreement itself or about the scope or what's being, um, being asked, I guess that's what I would ask, is there any, are there really any other questions regarding, um, the, you know, or the work and scope for?
I think a lot of that had to do with the ownership of the, um, the plans, as always, there's now states in the vision that they have to be the property of the city of Barstown and not the.
And indemnification and.
Like, my ability. As in, but.
Yeah, they weren't liable for anything. Oh, boy, I know. They had million dollars' insurance, but they weren't gonna be liable more than their fees.
Then, uh, do we actually need a home of voters for services?
Yes, yes. We need to approve the proposal for services, subject to the, uh, uh, costs, hourly rates and costs, and the amended terms and conditions.
I guess since I traded all this problem, I'll make the motion that we approve the agreement with, is it Q4?
QK4.
QK4, uh, as amended, uh, and as presented here.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second, Councilman Copeland? Is there any other discussion? Seeing now, in all the favor, the superintendent would say an aye. Opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, we have an enormous amount of certificates of appropriateness to approve tonight, so I'm gonna turn this over to Tim, because one of the council members, I think, has to recuse himself.
Yes, and Mayor, what I'd like to do first, I think, is Councilman Buckman has, uh, some that he is willing to be recusing on, so, um, what we'll do is we'll take those up first, if that's okay, and we'll allow him to exit and.
Figure out.
I was trying to be nicer than that, but yeah. And so what we'll do is we'll take those, I'll read the ones, um, and what are the conditions, and if you all want to follow along, I'll, I'll mention them by the letters. So, um, the ones that, um, Councilman Buckman is recusing on are the ones that are his applications or that are on a particular property that are, that's adjacent to him. Um, and the one adjacent to him are the ones under the application Troy Dennison. And so it starts with GCOA 1802 amended, Troy Dennison applicant owner, request to install wood siding on a structure at 112 North Third Street. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed siding. HCOA 18-13 Troy Dennison applicant owner, request to paint a structure at 112 North Third Street. Recommendation, approval to paint the structure the proposed colors. Uh, ICOA 18-14 Troy Dennison applicant owner, request to install a bar and outdoor seating at 112 North Third Street. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed bar and seating. JCOA 18-36 Troy Dennison applicant owner, request to install an AC unit on a new structure at 112 North Third Street. Recommendation, approval to install proposed AC unit with vent cover proposed. Uh, and then KCOA 18-37 Troy Dennison applicant owner, request to install lighting on a new structure at 112 North Third, uh, North Third Street. Recommendation, approval to install the portfolio de vrais light fixture as proposed. Uh, then we jump down to the ones under JTD Holdings LLC, that is, starts with O. COA 18-12 JTD Holdings LLC applicant owner, request to construct a new building at 105 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation, approval to construct the building with the proposed design and materials. Uh, PCOA 18-21 JTD Holdings LLC applicant owner, request to install a roof on a new building at 105 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation, approval to install the new proposed roof. Uh, QCOA 18-23 JTD Holdings LLC applicant owner, request to install wood siding on a new building at 105 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed wood siding. Uh, RCOA 18-24 JTD Holdings LLC applicant owner, request to install shutters on a new building at 105 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed shutters. SCOA 18-26 JTD Holdings LLC applicant owner, request to install landscaping and a sidewalk on a new building, uh, probably at a new building on, at 105 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation, approval to install the new sidewalk and landscaping proposed in the application. Uh, TCOA 18-27 JTD Holdings LLC applicant owner, request to paint and stain a new building at 105 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation, approval to use the proposed paint and stain colors. UCOA 18-38 JTD Holdings LLC applicant owner, request to install a new roof at 102 North Third Street. Recommendation, approval to install the new proposed roof. So you would be taking up GHIJKOPRSTU.
Yours don't match up at all.
The letter, he doesn't match up.
But I will make the motion that we adopt the recognition of the Aces Historical Review Board for those COAs as listed by our city attorney with the conditions set forth by the board.
Okay. I'll second it, Mayor. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just have a question. Um, I, just for clarification, on some of those, I guess it's because he has property joining or adjacent to it?
Yes, he's an adjoining property owner. And he, he had asked, he asked my opinion on it, and I said, you know, if he didn't have a strong opinion one way or another, I didn't think he needed necessarily to recuse, but he decided to err on the side of caution or recuse.
Yeah, he owns property on the other side of the alley. That's on that side of the alley. Okay, any other discussion? In all the favor, the superintendent would say an aye. Opposed? That's on that side of the alley. Those are passed. Okay.
Yep, I'll, a few more. Um, and these are the, the additional ones, starting with what I have as A. COA 18-11 Landmark Community Newspapers LLC applicant owner, request to paint the exterior of 110 West Stephen Foster Avenue. Uh, not time. Uh, approval, approval to paint the exterior, the building with the paint colors as proposed. Uh, BCOA 1803 amended Finn Davis Rental LLC applicant owner, request to paint the windows, trim and house at 214 East Laje Street. Recommendation, approval to paint the house the proposed colors. CCOA 18-10 Finn Davis Rental LLC applicant owner, request to alter the porch at 214 East Laje Street. Recommendation, approval to alter the porch and add the proposed brick to the porch. DCOA 18-15 Summer Arling House applicant Jonathan Talbot owner, request to replace the roof at, on the house at 111 South Second Street. Recommendation, approval to replace the roof with its design, color and material proposed. ECOA 18-16 Summer Arling House applicant Jonathan Talbot owner, request to replace the roof on the garage at 111 South Second Street. Recommendation: Approval to replace the roof with the design, color, and material proposed. FCOA 18-17 Summer Arling House applicant Jonathan Talbot owner, request to remove two trees at 111 South Second Street. Recommendation: Approval to remove the two trees and to replant the two proposed trees. Condition: The two trees that are proposed to be removed in this application are posing a danger to the structure, both to the roof and the structure's foundation. The applicant will replant two trees as proposed in the application. Then we jump to what I have as L. COA 18-09 David Hurst applicant owner, request to add additional parking spaces and a pathway at 209 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed parking spaces. Condition: A sample of the gravel will be presented to the preservation coordinator for final approval. MCOA 18-19 David Hurst applicant owner, request to alter the signage at 209 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to alter the signage as proposed. NCOA 18-20 David Hurst applicant owner, request to install a storage unit 209 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed storage unit. Condition: The paint of the storage unit will match the colors of the house. Then we jump to what I have as V. COA 18-28 Freddie Noe applicant owner, request to add a new addition to 418 North Third Street. Recommendation: Approval to build the proposed addition. WCOA 18-29 Freddie Noe applicant owner, request to add a roof to a new addition at 418 North Third Street. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed roof. XCOA 18-30 Freddie Noe applicant owner, request to install windows to a new addition at 418 North Third Street. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed wood windows. YCOA 18-31 Freddie Noe applicant owner, request to install bricks on a new addition at 418 North Third Street. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed brick to the new addition. ZCOA 18-32 Freddie Noe applicant owner, request to install steps and doors to a new addition at 418 North Third Street. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed doors and steps. Double A, what I have as double A. COA 18-33 Freddie Noe applicant owner, request to install driveway and sidewalk to a new addition at 418 North Third Street. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed driveway and sidewalk. BBCOA 18-34 Freddie Noe applicant owner, request to install a fence and lighting to a new addition at 418 North Third Street. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed fence and lighting to the addition. CCCOA 18-35 Freddie Noe applicant owner, request to install a garage to a new addition at 418 North Third Street. Recommendation: Approval to install the proposed attached garage.
You know, that's the way you prove these. We might need to go back on the JT Holding or JTD Holding, because I think we've got two more than you do, because ours are two more longer than yours has.
I think that they might have been tabled.
They got tabled.
We got tabled, so I think they were...
Oh, okay, two on the table, okay, that's why we're long, okay, so we don't have to cut it. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the COAs as read by our city attorney with the, with the conditions set forth with them.
Most of the councilors have a second. Second, Councilman Buckman, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, sitting by to say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. COAs approved. Thank you, Tim. You and Shay have been discussing. Everybody had a chance to review the minutes of the regular meeting. Should be 313. It's 313, 127. The last meeting.
Yeah, let's go approve these minutes yet.
This will be the minutes from the 313, right there. We'll do that by unanimous consent. Okay. You have any new orders? Okay, Chief Cressick, you're going to give us an update on your crime tip line?
I will. You know, it's not uncommon throughout a country that many crimes go unreported. And with that, there are many crimes throughout the country that are unsolved. And with that, I think that there are many people in our community that have information. And so at the Barstown Police Department, we have developed a crime tip line. And as you see behind us, it is 348 Pete. It's 348-4-328. This tip line is anonymous. And so if you call that, it's going to go straight into a voicemail. And this tip line is going to be either answered by either, it's going to be responded by myself or one of my command and staff members, one of the two assistant chiefs. And so when you call that, we're looking for information. If you have information about a crime that has occurred in our community, or you have information about a crime that is occurring in our community, not one that is active, one that you need to call 911, because it's not going to be something that is, is going to go into a voicemail, but something that you have information on, that we can solve crimes in our community, we want you to use this tip line. A lot of crimes get solved with tip lines. And so this is something that is new to the Barstown Police Department, something that we think is important, and something that with the community's partnership with our police department, we think that we can solve crimes together. Remember that, to be specific, because you're anonymous, we are not going to be able to call you back if you utilize this tip line. So be specific with your information, and remember that you're anonymous when you leave this information. So we hope that we come in in the morning or in the evening, and we have a lot of information, because there are crimes out there, we have victims, we have families that want cases solved, and with the community's help, we think that we can do that. So please, it's time to turn the heat up on criminals and solve these cases. So please utilize this tip line.
Thank you, Chief. We've all been working on this for a while, and we got the phone company, got us all lined out on that, so I think the boot is the right direction to help us better deal with the crimes. Anyone have any other questions, Chief Cressick on this?
And then anyone in the community tomorrow? We're doing another coffee with the cops tomorrow at McDonald's. It starts at 8:30 in the morning, so if you're on your way to work, stop by.
Thank you, Chief. In your packet, we also have the minutes from the recent recreation committee meeting. It's March 22nd, I think, Councilman Williams has one correction or clarification of the minutes.
And since the rec director's here, I'll let him speak to that, because he told me about it today. You want to address that for us?
I was just going to point out, we had a discussion at the committee meeting about the fence around the skate park at the corner of Jones Avenue and Broadway. KLC Law Prevention did an inspection this past, this past summer, and they suggested at the time to go ahead and put this fence up around it. And we discussed it with the suggestion, we thought it was wise to go ahead and do it in lieu of being some sort of liability case. I discussed it again with the supervisor of one of the law prevention people that came out today. They clarified what he was trying to explain to us, that they suggest it, it's not required, it's not a liability issue. They're looking to lock the skate park up after hours is what they're wanting to do, and that will prevent, like, damage, violence, vandalism, whatnot. And explained to them that we have had an issue with that after hours. He said he really doesn't see any need to go ahead and do it then, you know, they still think it's a good idea to do it, but in our community, it's not required, so.
You don't think it's budgeted either?
No.
You think it's budgeted?
It was coming up in this, this budget year, because the inspection was after, but it's like the last time.
Any other questions on the minutes in the rec board? Thank you, Daniel. You don't have any unfinished business or new business? Any members of the council have anything to bring before the council this evening?
I forwarded that email that I got from the KLC about the Senate Bill 1 and Senate Bill 66. Are you familiar with Senate Bill 1?
Sure. Pension, pension and the 66 vote.
Well, the government, the Senate Bill 66 was, was set aside to, to kind of gradually implement the...
Phase in.
Phase in the tax reform or the mandate to cities and counties. The governor's upset about that, because he thinks we're kicking the can down the road again, and he vowed to veto it if the legislator approved Senate Bill 66 without approving Senate Bill 1. So I thought that might be something interesting, you might want to challenge your legislators about. Because without, without phasing it in, then all cities and counties are going to take the big hit right off of that, should they do that. But he's, he's determined that he doesn't want to do a phase in, he wants to do it all at once, so, interestingly.
Yeah, especially since the CERS, they put it in, the contributions as required in state is not down there.
He's threatening the lawmakers enough that they've been kicking the can down a little long enough, and he didn't want to, he said, he vowed to veto it if they pass Senate Bill 66, which I'm sure a lot of the legislators have been getting heat from constituents and the teachers unions and everybody and all, everyone else about that, but just so FYI.
Well, they can, they can come to terms on Senate Bill 1, they can still pass Senate Bill 66 without having Senate Bill 1.
That's what, I know, that's, that's what they're meant, and that's the way they were leaning, but as well as you know, our governor is, is determined that he's going to veto that, because they're going to write veto.
Even though there's multiple pensions, there are apples and oranges on what the issues are in.
Well, Senate Bill 66, I bet you, it also has a huge impact on school systems outside of the teachers side of things, because many of their employees are in the CERS, they're non-teachers, and most of those are members of that, so it'd be a huge impact on the school districts, a lot of the cities and counties as well, so. Times run now, so that's why we have to, the legislators encouraging them to do the right thing. Okay. I think, is any other council members, anybody can bring it before the council? Nothing, we will be adjourned going into an executive session. I need a motion to go into an executive session pursuant to KRS 61.8101. B, deliberations on the future acquisition or sale of real property by public agency or publicity will be likely to affect the value of the property. So a motion for Councilman Williams to second. Second, Councilman Buckman. All in favor, sitting by to say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll adjourn to an executive session.
Good to see you, my city. We come by.
Councilman Buckman, down to second. Councilman Sheplers, all in favor, sitting by to say an aye?
Aye.
And we did not take any action?
Yeah, let the record show that we took no formal action while we were in executive session. We have been discussing the possibility of purchasing property for the benefit of the public, and we've identified three tracts of land here in the city that joins existing city property. It totals approximately about 15 acres, these three tracts of land, and we have uses for with the growth we're having in departments such as public safety, particularly Fire Department, the Police Department, some of this property could be used for those purposes and Public Works and Electric and Cable. There's needs for expansion in other areas out off of Kelly Drive, and so we've been in negotiation with the three property owners and have, they've at least come to terms of what they would like us to pay for that property, and I personally have been in negotiation with them. I'm making the recommendation that we approve the purchase of these 33 tracts of land at the figures that I've brought back from these negotiations with the three property owners. So with that, I would ask for a motion that we approve the purchase of a tract of land from the Barstown Church of Christ. The second tract of land would be from Kentucky Home Village. The third tract of land would be from Newcom Oil Company. So I'd ask for a motion, a formal motion on those three transactions.
Mayor, we'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into agreements to purchase the following properties for specified prices. We do also authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to complete the purchase of these properties. We hereby allocate funds to complete the purchase with the funds to be borrowed from unrestricted funds contained in the combined utilities fund, with those funds to be paid back per terms of a separate document and as budgeted in the upcoming budget for fiscal year 2018-19 and years following. The properties to be purchased are as follows. Property 1, attractive land consisting of approximately two acres of surplus land to be purchased from the Barstown Church of Christ. That land to be purchased at a price of $80,000 per acre and located to the rear of the property at 1104 North Third Street in Barstown. Property 2, attractive land approximately 5.9 acres in size, fronting on Paget Drive to be purchased from KHV LLC. That land to be purchased at a price of $100,000 per acre. Property 3, attractive land formerly the site of Newcom Oil Company's headquarters located at 1360 East John Rowland Boulevard, consisting of 7.5 acres, more or less, to be purchased for a net price of $940,000. These properties are being purchased for and will be dedicated to a public governmental purpose. Exact acreages will be determined by survey.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Donors. We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Kelly, is there any other discussion?
Just one thing, we said we were going to do this in the 2018-19 budget, I missed that. We probably might, to the extent we close it this year, we'll have to amend our budget this year then.
Yes, sort of.
If the payback is budgeted.
Yeah, yeah, the payback will begin.
Yes.
But we've got some other, we'll have to do a budget amendment for this and probably one more anyway before the end of the year, so we'll take care of that with the budget amendment. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, sitting by to say an aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. I'd just like to say that, you know, an opportunity to put, you know, approximately 15 acres together that already joins existing city property is really the main part of town on two of the busiest quarters in town, being 31E and 245 is, is an opportunity that doesn't come by all the time, and we've got needs with both the police and the fire department and Public Works that are really cramped in our existing locations and here in our fire department here at City Hall, so this will also have a positive impact, we're certain, on our ISO rating that we're currently involved with this year by having this second location available for fire protection, and it broadens our coverage, so that will have a positive impact on our ISO rating, which will result in reduced insurance premiums for some, some property owners. Not every insurance company goes by an ISO rating. With that said, you know, this is a major capital expenditure, this one that's going to accumulate over time, several years before we'll finish all this work that will be needed for this expansion. But we're also in the process of negotiating a new franchise agreement with local gas and electric for gas service within the city limits of Barstown. And we currently do not have a franchise fee associated with our franchise agreement. with our franchise agreement, uh, and that will be a recommendation I'm gonna, uh, put out for our next budget, that we, uh, put a three percent franchise fee with our next franchise agreement with local gas and electric. That money will go into the general fund, uh, and, uh, help these general fund departments be able to better meet their budget needs, uh, in the future, so, uh, that'll be my recommendation with our new budget, of course you all will be able to take action on that, whether you approve of it or not, during the budget process, and also with the franchise agreement that we'll be, uh, working on with LGV, 'cause that agreement you will have to approve, and of course, any budget, uh, will come forward also. But, uh, the timing, I think, for us to change, uh, is now, particularly with these capital needs that we have, and this general fund need that we're gonna have to meet these obligations. We take fire, and police, and streets, and not revenue-producing departments, and so, they have to be supported by the general fund, so this money will help the general fund and help them meet their, uh, obligations moving forward, so... Any other discussion? Not, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So move.
There's a motion by Councilman Sheplers, that was second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Kelly, all in favor, somebody say an aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Four.